Yes. Thank you. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Lake Forest Park City Council Special Work Session for Thursday, June 22nd, 2022. And note that this is a special work session because this is not normally when we hold work sessions during the month. And if I'm not mistaken, is that correct now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And so I'd like to call the meeting to order and do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda for the special work session, June 23rd.
Second. It's been moved and seconded any discussion. If you're none of us in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, great. And tonight, we have our illustrious Finance Director who's going to walk us through Budget 101. And she has an outstanding presentation to share with all of us. And for those of you that are new, this will be really helpful. And for those of us who are kind of old. That didn't come out right. It is a good refresher. We can always. Please, Director Bond, you have the floor.
Okay, so we'll just jump right in. This is just, the only thing we're starting or discussing this evening is going to be the budget process. We are not discussing any numbers. It's just the overview of the process and the budget calendar. And so that's what we're going to be discussing this evening, just to give a brief overview before we jump right in. So the overview is that a city budget, we can say that word correctly. Let's start with that. Provides an outline for future levels of service and legislative priorities. It acts as the legal document for the city, for local government, for government officials, and gives them the authority to incur obligations and pay expenses. It allocates resources amongst, among departments. And it controls how much each department can spend within a biennial to give kind of the overview of why we adopt a budget. The budget process, this is probably a little bit more challenging to read, and I'm not going to go through all of it. But I'm just going to reference because as we go through the slides, we will touch on each process. But this is easily found in your currently adopted budget that is out on the website. On page 19, there is a great description. This picture is on there that just briefly walks through and discusses the city's process of budgeting. So if we are in the middle of the process and it needs to be referenced back, just know that the budget process is on page 19 of our current budget that is on the website. Thank you, Matt, for your help. So I've kind of broken this up into the budget process being spring and what happens during the spring, summer, and fall. So it's going to continue that way. And we're going to use the kind of the budget calendar in addition at the end, tie it in. So earlier this spring, council had a retreat and that retreat kind of also acted to identify some future budget priorities. Staff has been doing some budget objectives discussions, basically at leadership team. We've been having some discussions about how we're going to go about budgeting and that with all of the changes due to the pandemic that we do need to go back through and make sure that we are justifying every, everything that we are putting into and requesting because so many changes have taken place. Update any necessary city plans and/or policies. In this sense, I don't think there were too many. This, this year, we didn't have to. But in previous years, we've had to update the financial policy plan. And sometimes there's policies or plans that you go through that are necessary to update. And those typically happen in that spring timeframe. And then the official call to the budget. And basically, that is a letter or a memo that goes out and requests, actually, request is a nice word. Request directs. Yeah, request directs. Then all departments start working towards building their budgets and, and putting that thought into creating the expenditures and the revenues associated with, with what they're responsible for. And then that is when the budget estimates start being developed. And here, I want to definitely say by department teams. A lot of the documents you will find says that it's by directors. And every director can tell you that it takes a team to build that budget and to help them make sure that that they are on track and they are not forgetting anything, et cetera. And especially like in public works, they just touch so many. You know, the sewer, the surface water, the streets, that it really does, the community partners. Corey jumps in on that. It really, it does take a team to build this budget. And then going to the next slide. The summer, so actually, I will take a minute to stop and say that's, this is kind of the point of which we are at right now. The, the budget has been called. And we are, as a city, building, estimating and building our budgets. So that is the current point of where we are at right now. Towards the end of June. And then going on to the summer, the budget estimates developed and completed by department directors and teams. So that due date per the calendar, the budget calendar is July 1st, which is coming up. And then at that point, the finance department starts putting all of those estimates together by just as a whole, for the, for the entire city budget. And then that's where finance and administration start building the budget. And what that means is that we start having a conversation about revenues and revenue trends in addition to their, the expenditure estimates and requests that are being requested by all of the departments. And then if, if there is a, the next step is when administration reviews and evaluates any proposed, what we call program enhancement and change forms. So if a department is requesting a significant change for the city's budget, they have to ask for it and justify it. Cost wise, explain if it's a one-time cost, if it's an ongoing cost, and provide some estimates and some backup for that request on why they're asking. And then walking down, at the end of July, we will, it's scheduled on the calendar to present the, the year-end revenue and expenditure projections for the current 2021, 2022 biennial. Because before we can start discussing where the budget is going to go for 23, 24, we need to know where we're going to end up in the current biennial. And then between that timeframe, between basically when everything is submitted at the beginning of July, all the way until the mayor's proposed budget, this is where it is a really busy time for finance administration and all the departments of putting this budget together and having, working towards the, what we call the finalization of the mayor's proposed. They also refer to it as a preliminary budget, city budget. And that will come out at the very beginning of September. And there's a lot of moving parts that take place before that.
Director Bond, may I direct you for just a second? I just thought it might be appropriate for us to check and see if, and if you all have questions up to this point, it's a lot to think about. There's a lot of moving parts here. And we only see, really only see part of it. There's a huge amount of heavy lifting behind scenes that, that happens before we actually get to take, get to take a look at these things. But colleagues, any questions or comments?
I have more, just a comment to tell our council members, we did this for the, you know, the budget that is just wrapping up. And we were dealing with the pandemic. And I just want to say that our, our city administrator, our finance director and our whole team did a really good job of being conservative as we went into the, the budget process. So we didn't have any shock, shocking surprises or, you know, emergencies to deal with. And so as some additional revenues and funds came in from other sources, we were able to, you know, make adjustments that made a lot of sense. So this time, we're dealing with, you know, inflation and other issues, you know, that economic, you know, supply chain issues. So I think we have as much uncertainty this time in many ways. But I just wanted to say that how, what a, what a, this is a really time-consuming part. But the staff, last time around, our team did a really excellent job. So we were in really good shape. Oh, and a lot of our staff took some furloughs and, and salary decreases that helped us manage through it as well.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other thoughts or comments? If not, we can just leave, Director.
So walking into the fall, September, the beginning of September is when the mayor will present the preliminary or the proposed biennial budget for the city. And then immediately following that presentation, we have scheduled detailed department presentations. And this is a shift from, last year, we did this opposite. We did the detailed department presentations. And then we, we came out with the preliminary biennial budget. And we've shifted this because with the new council members, we've swapped it because we feel that it makes more sense and that, that you would want to see the numbers in hand. And in order to understand what it is they're asking for and what it is they do to operate on the operational side, capital side. And so we will have that for a couple evening meetings. And then after all of that, administration, finance and administration will walk you through all of the revenue projections and that whole piece. And then after we presented the preliminary budget, the departments have presented their presentations for an interactive conversation with council. And then we've gone through the revenue discussions. Then at that time, we pass it over to city council for the recommendation and deliberations. And I am going to take a little pause here and say that there's quite a few meetings built in for this. And I think three, to be precise, if not maybe one more. And, and that's quite a bit of time to, to, to discuss the, what you've been seeing. And after hearing all the department presentations, to, to have conversations and provide additional recommendations and deliberations. And I just also want to state that if it's too much time, that there are, that we built that in on purpose to make sure that we weren't short on time. But it is possible, as we've stated before, discussing our budget calendar, that it is possible that some of those meetings may not hold if they're not necessary, if and only if. But they're built in.
Question.
Absolutely.
So on the property tax, utility rate increases and user fee schedule and budget-related items, some of those things that relate to the revenue and things we can do to potentially increase our revenue projections. Where, where in the schedule do you anticipate we would discuss those options?
We're going to discuss them right after the, the department presentations. We will, we will cover what the city put in as far as what, what we, I think probably the best way to say it is what we built in under the mayor's preliminary. Yeah. So we'll, we'll have that conversation right there, telling you how, what we've built in. Being utility rate increases and what they're from.
Yes, I'm, I'm talking about options to increase our revenues.
So if the council chooses.
Before the public hearing, if the council chooses, so. That, that would be, okay. I just, I'm sorry. I just, I'm interested in that topic.
The only thing, the only thing that's built into the budget is stuff that's already adopted.
Right.
Or based on a rate analysis.
Rating.
Right. That to keep this budget stable, this is what this rate needs to be. But beyond that revenue, that's, that's worse.
Yes, and that's where I was trying to figure out where in this sequence, we would have that conversation about things that aren't built into current assumptions.
So that would be the city council recommendation piece then, in the recommendations.
Yes, I guess. Well, hopefully, we'll hear some background on what some of our councilmatic options might be. Yes, I remember that, but I appreciate.
New context, yes.
Yeah.
Couple of thoughts, everyone. Actually, Larry, you had your hand up first. Sorry, I can barely see from here. Please, Mr. Goldman.
Um, yeah, thanks. Yeah, this is very informative. I think this might be a question for council members that have gone through this process before. When the council's deliberating, do we tend to be deliberating at a very, like the 30,000-foot level in terms of like overall, like how much each department is getting? Or do we have a much more narrowly focused, like we're going to go line by line and see, does this project make sense? Does this project make sense?
That's an excellent question. I, I think that for the most part, we are deferring to the administration on, you know, where we are on these various things, what the recommendations are. And generally, unless we're in a crisis situation, we pretty much, I think, stay within what our sort of special projects or recommendations are that, that we want to bring into the mix. So I'm not, you know, again, we're, fortunately, we're in a position right now. It's not going to be an easy budget by any stretch of imagination. So we're not going to have to go through like we did years ago and cut very, very deeply. Any other thoughts from people that can do the process, please?
Yeah. Thanks, Councilmember Goldman. It's a really good question. So it's kind of, I would say it's a kind of mixture. Most of the time, we're at 30,000-foot level. But certainly in the past, we've identified specific department requests. I'm thinking particularly maybe of the police department, for example, and said, well, actually, no, we're not going to approve that additional expenditure at this time. So, so it's a little bit of a mixture. And occasionally, you'll find something in the budget that sort of sticks out to a group of council members or one council member only discussed that. But mostly, it's that, that higher level thinking.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you for that context.
I wanted to add something. Oh, please. From over there. Sorry, I was going to add a little bit, but I didn't want to do it from over there off the screen. But the other thing that we want to bring to you, so obviously, the mayor's budget comes to you balanced. And, you know, the, some of the biggest things you've got to look at and scrutinize are projections for revenue. Take a look at expenditures, as Councilmember Castle pointed out. Do they make sense, the requests? So basically, we'll go through with the administration, finance department, with the mayor and vet the requests. And you may get all of them. You may only get some of what the departments have requested as we feel either they merit or they fit within the budget. But what we would also like to bring to you, and this is fingers crossed, that ending fund balance, beginning fund balance, revenue projections play out, that you'll have some money to quote unquote, "play with." These may be one-time dollars, ongoing revenue. But hopefully, as we get into those projections, there's, there's a delta where you can take these council priorities that, you know, came out of your retreat and start picking some of them off and working them in. And so that, that's, that's the goal, is to give you a balanced budget, hopefully with some dollars and maybe some recommendations on how those might be implemented. And then you can have that policy discussion as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. With a thought, one of the thoughts I wanted to just throw out here too is that the evolution of our budget process has really come a long way from where it was a decade ago. I think a decade ago, when the mayor actually presented his budget, and it was printed, it was the hottest thing, except for Harry Potter, I think, at this, at that time. And there literally were a dozen copies or more that were requested with it. Pre-requested, printed copies of the budget. And the process has become one of, of real, I don't want to say Bradley, real clarity and, and really intuitive. And I, and it worked so much better than it did many years ago. And my hats off to the finance department and our colleague, Mr. Risha, who also put us in a very good place in terms of the process. I think it's so much easier and linear a process to go through now than it was years ago. And we also started late and didn't have a lot of the transparency, the information from the administration until really right about the time the budget dropped. And so it took us a lot of catch-up time. And this is a great, this process is a great way to kind of front-load the information, kind of spread it out so people can ask questions and get back to staff later, dig into some different options, you know, explore revenue opportunities as well as, as we're voting, what we would like to do. And the other thing I wanted to mention too is that Councilmember Risha, I think in the last budget process, maybe the previous one too, I can't recall. And also, once the, the budget calendar was finalized, he sent out a little matrix, matrix of basically the objectives for each of the meetings and kind of topically, where it will help everyone to think about, okay, here's the goal, here's what our objectives are for, for this particular conversation. So that we can come to that meeting either prepared or to be able to ask a question of like, hey, I'd like to talk about additional revenue opportunities here or there. So if that helps. Just for a second.
So, point. Thank you. Just reading into what you said, by the time it gets to council recommendations, is the budget more or less set in the sense that any priorities that we had should have been baked into that mayor's budget? And there's not to be huge changes once it gets to the stage of council recommendations?
That's a great question. I think it's varied over time. And I might call it to chime in here. I, I think that for the most part, the it seems as though we've had in the past some general ideas and the administration's trying to give, tries to give us options. We've always had a very collaborative relationship, except for a very long time ago, with the administration. And I think, I, I think that, to your question, I think that, that there, there really isn't necessarily like a huge amount of changes, I mean, massive sort of earth-shaking changes. But I, I don't, it's certainly not off the table if something has to, has to change. And the will of the body is that we're surprised by something or, which I can't even, in any circumstance, anticipate that ever happening in where we are right now. So any thoughts?
Well, yeah, I'm not just thinking that, just, just like any of our budgets, the truth is, there's not a lot of discretionary.
That too.
There's a lot of fixed costs, right? And so there's not a lot of change that can happen when you have, you know, fixed costs that, that really, there's not a lot of choice around. You have to provide certain services and amenities and salaries and staffing has to be at a certain level. Or it's, you know, it's difficult to imagine that it could be less than it is. So, so anyway, that is so there's quite a bit of constraint there. But as City Administrator Hill says, there is some discretionary money. And that really is where the council starts to make some decisions. It's not a lot, but it, it does give us some, some.
And on points, there, there are times too, if the council priority has come up and we recognize that there really isn't quite enough discretionary funds to go in that direct, in the direction that we're looking for. Compromises have to be made, of course, potentially to both sides. And we've, in the past, we've done a little bit of, well, what if we don't, don't have, have, take a little bit of money from this program so we can do this program? But it, it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a very collaborative experience and a little bit of horse trading, if you will. And I think it's, it's a very healthy process. So again, I think, I think the bottom line here too is that not only do we not have a whole lot of discretionary additional funds, but there's a whole lot of uncertainty coming down the pike again. And just when we thought maybe things would, you know, I read today that you can, you can get a couple of treasury bonds right now for until September that are paying almost 10%, 9. something percent.
I would just add a couple of things. First of all, we, our Finance Director uses revenue projection assumptions that come from the county or the state. We use, yes, we.
Yes.
We do use both the county and. And those come later. That's by recollection. We don't get those early in this process.
Yes.
So, so we don't invent our own assumptions that way, is what I wanted to say. And then second, in terms of discretion, one thing that Councilmember Lebo has raised that I would like us to think about is the, our, our street funds, our street maintenance funds, and how we're going to use them. Do we, do we look at the priorities we have right now and assume that we can do fewer in a year because we're going to do some edge improvements for, you know, minor edge improvements that don't cost a lot of money? But just, do we, do we change our priority list with that in mind? And so I, I do think that's an area that's been a council discussion where we may want to engage and exercise some back and forth communication and discretion. And obviously, we're quite interested in what our team, especially our public works team, might, might be able to help us on that. So I would like us to take that up. I, I'm viewing it as kind of edge improvements of a modest financial nature. But I can see that that would reduce the coverage of our overlay program. So how does that, you know, change our priorities for that program?
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'll point to that about the just the revenue discussions, there's capacity in the TVB that we could look at. And I think that I said, to me, that's a no-brainer. I'm just like, that's a riddle.
Thank you. And my apologies. I was outside gardening and I lost track of time. Another aspect which may come up earlier, I apologize if it has, is the, the, looking at the six-year fund balance. And so as we look at what we're doing now, if it is like a reoccurring cost, like with the street overlay, if we're going to increase that, we also have to kind of keep in mind that six-year fund balances and whether we're dipping down at any one point. And so those are of course predictive out there in the future. But it gives us a sense of if we stay on the same trajectory, what will happen to our fund balances? And are they dipping into reserves or close to reserves? So that's another piece that we kind of have to keep in mind as we move through this budget.
And on point, we do have one or two members of the community who really want to take a look at that and make sure we're not heading the bad direction. So I suspect we will see the same again this year.
For sure.
As they definitely like their pre-copies as well too. So, you know, and colleagues, another comment I was going to quickly make here too, bookmarking this for, for future discussion. Budget season seems to also kind of highlight a lot of confusion about our revenue sources within the community. And, and I think it's probably really important for all of us to be cognizant of the fact that, that if you're having a conversation with a member of the community, they may not necessarily know or understand how our revenue sources are, are derived and, and how. uh, they may not necessarily know or understand, um, how our revenue sources are, are derived and, and how property tax.
How low or.
Yeah.
Tax revenues are.
And, and I, um, and as part of the process, there's always an education that the administration puts in, in the mix with the, in the budget, et cetera. And, but it's also important for all of us to make sure that we're well-versed in, in some of these, uh, common misunderstandings, because they seem to be, I hate to use the word, endemic. Um, and, and it, and it's amazing to me how often, even just last week, I had someone who's been a long-term resident, who mentioned property tax as well. There's got to be a windfall because property values are up.
And they don't understand the cap.
And it's like, I just need to carry around a portable whiteboard or something, I'm not sure. Or the bi-chart from your house.
We need straight quarter here. My factoid is, for my house, with my assessed value, the city of Lake Forest Park gets seven hundred fifty dollars a year from my property taxes. That's all. And I live in Sheridan Beach, you know?
It's, it's. It's a very, very small amounts, isn't it? And, and the percentage of property taxes that comes to, to the city has gone down, uh, over the years.
Down to eight percent.
But you're right, people don't understand how the cap works, um, because that was long ago, kind of Reagan-esque years, right? And people don't realize that we, you know, when a, when houses keep selling for one point two, one point five million dollars in Lake Forest Park, that we're, we're not getting the, the, the benefit of that.
Like.
Well, my house has doubled in value in fifteen years, but my property tax certainly does not.
Right.
That's correct, yeah.
But on point, um, the mayor's next article that he's going to do, go right to this.
Oh, excellent.
There's a couple of graphs and explanation of, of how the property tax cap works, and the fact that the city can only collect the same amount as it did before. And if the value goes up, the property tax rate goes down, and the only thing you can do is capture that one percent.
And, and the.
Try and have that.
And the problem with raising the levy rate then, is that we then start with an even lower level, so that any levy rate increase we want to do looks even larger percentage-wise. So.
Because we're already behind.
So the cap, like, keeps making the whole look deeper. So anyway, just, uh, I, it took me a long time to learn all these nuances myself. I must admit, I had no clue when I came onto council, or I had a slight clue, but, you know, about a twenty-five percent clue. I learned a lot.
You're not, yeah, you're not alone there. That's right. Colleagues, other, other thoughts or comments, questions? Well, I, I for one am very much looking forward to the budget season and.
We haven't finished yet.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, wow, there's a couple more. So, basically, uh, after we have the council recommendations and deliberations, then, uh, with those proposed changes, um, whether they're revenue or expenditure side, we again have to rebalance, and then we present a proposed city budget with those revision, which then we walk into the public hearings with. Uh, and those public hearings are for the property tax levy increase, which is just the, the one percent that we were discussing, the utility rate increase, the user fee schedule, that is something that we have to adopt, uh, via resolution every single year, because there are certain rates that just are going to change every single year. Um, and I will just use sewer as one of them, because King County now is changing their utility rate every single year. Therefore, we will have to pass that through. That's just an example of one item that's on the user fee schedule. And, um, any other budget-related items that, um, and that's just kind of a blanket for, uh, anything that comes up during the budget.
Questions? So if, for example, we choose to do something different with the, the TBD, uh, so if we, we chose to raise it, does that also become part of the public hearing?
Yes, and I would have to, well, I, I, I might have to retract that. That might be a legal question. I don't know if that would have to have its own. I mean, it would be blanketed in, we would include it here, but I don't know the legal side of its own public hearing. But it definitely would be something that we would discuss in addition under this umbrella for multiple public hearings. And then going down, uh, adopting the property tax, so with, that we need to, for the city of Lake Forest Park, that we would need to file with the King County, the deadline is November thirtieth. So, uh, everything else under the public hearings, or what we define as the legislation portion of the budget being ordinances, resolutions, that can all be adopted, um, could be adopted outside of that.
No, thank you.
But the hard deadline on the property tax has to be done by November thirtieth. And then walking down to the final bullet, uh, adopting the budget by ordinance and per the budget calendar, the goal is to have it adopted by mid-November, um, which has been historically, uh, what we've done at this city, um, with all of the budget-related items and resolutions. And the goal has always been for that November timeframe prior to the holiday. But the hard deadline, and I thought that I would add that and put it on there, the hard deadline is December thirty-first, um, which this city has, since I have been here, we have always adopted within November, which is early compared to other cities, but I think a great practice, because there's a lot of other things that take place in December. So I'll just leave that a little to that. And. We mark to the next slide. Uh, so this is also a screenshot out of your budget, and I just think that it helps just walking through the budget process to just give a quick overview of the, basically our fund structure, of how it works. And so this is just probably one of the best visuals I've seen within government, um, that was done by a previous director, and it just walks through the governmental funds, the special revenue funds, the debt service funds, the capital funds, the enterprise funds, the, the, um, internal service funds, and the fiduciary funds, which are funds that we hold that are not really, um, our money. There's outside entities, uh, that it's their money. Um, and so it, this quickly walks through the, the big, um, funds, and then the circles are basically the sub-funds that are in their own, they have their own fund number, but they, what we call, they, they basically roll into the big fund. So the sewer utility fund, for example, it has a capital fund, it also has a reserve fund and the public works trust replacement or repayment fund, that all goes into the sewer utility fund. So, um, I just think this is a very, uh, an excellent visual uh, for our city, and that too is within the adopted budget. And then on the final slide, is the budget calendar, that it still says draft, but hopefully after later this evening, uh, it will, uh, no longer stay draft. And this is to walk through all of the dates that have been previously discussed. Um, and there are a couple line items on there that you will see in a very light gray, that those ones are titled kind of if needed. Um, and, and so they're grayed out to just really highlight that they will only be held if they are necessary and needed. And they're built in to make sure that with three new council members, and just through the budget process in general, that we have enough time, and that we're, we're being reasonable to make sure that we have enough time to discuss everything that needs to be discussed during this process. And, um, with that being said, most of what we previously walked through, um, on the slides is what is then reflected, and this is just the calendar that's showing you the dates, the days, uh, the description of what will be discussed, the time of the meeting, and the meeting type. And I believe that includes the presentation. Are there any questions?
I have one more. I'm trying to remember when we, when the value of new construction, which is part of the caucus for the levy, when is that?
The value of new construction.
Sorry, please.
Are you asking when it's cut off, or when it's, when it's, when it comes in as the estimate from?
Yeah, is it, is that as part of the whole package at the same time, or is it?
The city receives estimate, proof of what they define as preliminary estimates as part of the, um, property tax that actually are included in addition with, when we present the property tax, there is a section in there that identifies out specifically what the city has received in new construction. Um, and so it will identify it as just its own separate line item. And historically, um, in addition to presenting that ordinance, that agenda cover and ordinance, we always attach that preliminary backup to show where we received our numbers, and those numbers are coming directly from preliminary estimates from King County.
So it all comes as part of that package?
And then, if you'll remember, on that ordinance, it has been a little while, but we always have a line in there that rounds it up by twenty-five, thirty thousand, because you need to be high, if there's any varying factors that you're capturing the full amount. That, because it's a preliminary number and you're adopting it prior to all of the possible information being fully finalized.
That's a hard one for the public, that's what I remember.
Yeah. It's, yeah.
Yeah.
And if you don't project high.
Yeah.
It's.
You lose.
You lose whatever.
Right, you have to, you have to do that, yeah, that's a hard one.
That actually goes as a question for me. If, if we were to see a lot of, um, a, you know, detached AAU building, does that count as new construction that changes our base?
Uh, it would count as new construction, because it would be a form of new construction, and, but I don't know exactly, it, it would come in as that.
Probably similar to a subdivision.
Was it an improvement to an existing property?
Yeah, I'm wondering, it doesn't come in as new growth, or it just come in as an increase in value on the property, because it's not a subdivided law.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to double check that.
Yeah.
I would think it's going to say, yeah, just an increase in value, and.
This reflects.
Attach on that.
Do anything for us.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mr. Goldman.
Oh, I, I just put my hand up. Um, I have a question. At our retreat, I believe, um, uh, Finance Director Vaughn was, uh, discussing laddering with us as a city investment strategy. And I was just wondering, um, is that something that we'll be considering as part of increased revenues for the next biennial budget?
Yes. There's a struggle with bandwidth right now. Uh, there's, there's a struggle internally with bandwidth, and I, this is something that's really hard for me personally, because I feel very strongly and I about investing and doing everything that I discussed, but, um, something has, um, bandwidth is an issue right now internally. I just maybe need to leave it there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Goldman.
On that point, it's in our policies, financial policies now, right? We adopted them. We did. So it's a bandwidth question, not a policy.
We adopted, we adopted the policy, and the policy specifically states, as we stated at, uh, the council retreat, that the strategy has to be approved by the budget and finance committee. It states that in the policy specifically. So, um, administration, it, it has to run through, before we do anything, it will have to run through and have approval of that committee prior to implementing any form of.
Thank you for that clarification. Yes.
Yes.
Thoughts, comments, anyone else? Director Vaughn, any closing thoughts or, Mr. Hill? Thank you. Let's see, this is, this is great. My apologies, I didn't want me to cut you off. I literally cannot see that, the line on the screen. I don't have my glasses today, so embarrassingly enough. Um, so, yeah, they're, they wrote, I got new ones over. I, I think if there's nothing else, well, we can't have anything else, we go to the order, especially, so I guess we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.